Okay, all members of the Board of Selectmen are here. We called the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order earlier today at 7:06 PM. Could I have a motion, please, to return to open session? Monica Moos, Sarah Seconds, all in favor? Okay. All right, we'll dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance since we're on Zoom today. First Selectment's report. Couple things to go through. So there were about 4,500 folks in Darien who received a letter from Aquarian. The letter pertained to the composition or the material composition of the service lines for those properties, between those properties and the distribution lines for Aquarian. And the letter basically said that, in most cases, that Aquarian did not know the material that the service line was made of, and that they're now required by federal law to let those home or business owners know that they don't know what the material is made out of. So if it's lead, or if it's galvanized steel, then it's a potential issue. So I sent out a supplemental town newsletter with a video that I recorded that explains all of this and tells homeowners what they should do about this in the event that they receive one of those letters. So if you're watching this video and you've not seen that and you have concerns or questions about that, please get a copy of the town newsletter and you'll, from last Friday, and you'll see the video that I recorded that explains that. If you, can I get that? Please drop a note to my office or call me and I'll make sure that you get it and that your questions are answered. A big thank you to the Monuments and Ceremonies Commission for the Veterans Day observation that they put on on November 11th. It was very well organized with great speakers and content. So I appreciate everything that they did and it was great to salute the many veterans who have served our nation. I had a chance to attend the Old Timers Association Dinner and award ceremony this past week, last Monday, actually. And I have to say, there must have been 250 people there. I had no idea that the organization was as large as this. But congratulations to all the awards recipients there. What a great event that was. Jed Lawrence was the MC. You've not seen him in action. You only have to cover your ears a few times with jokes that he tells. So thank you to everybody who participated in that. Let's see, the Darien Bookave, which if you don't know about that organization, they are over on the Post Road, basically across from Papa Joe's and between the Christian Science Reading Room and St. John's Catholic Church. That organization has been in business for 75 years and just celebrated their anniversary. They are dedicated to bringing books in English to places all over the world to help English learners. One of the great things is that every one of those books is stamped from your friend, Darien Bookave, Darien, Connecticut, United States of America. And I can think of no better way to serve as an ambassador for our town to folks overseas. And really is wonderful what they do. Their building, by the way, I don't think has changed a bit since they bought it in 1949. So if you wanted to see furniture and magazines literally untouched from the post-war period, it's quite the tour. But make room in your philanthropic heart for Darien Bookave, the great organization. Three other quick things. We tabled the discussion of the tanker truck replacement at our last meeting. Jim Palin and I will be attending the Fire Commission meeting on December 17th and we'll be taking that discussion up with them, particularly focusing not just on the tanker decision, but on a fresh look at the replacement schedule for all fire apparatus. So we'll, after that meeting on December 17th, I'll get back to the board in terms of next steps with regard to that particular purchase. Hopefully at the next meeting, if not the Board of Segment meeting after that, I've asked Ed Gentile to help us look at potential consultants that could work with the town on pedestrian infrastructure. That's come up in the last few meetings and there are a number of folks who are interested in that. I think that resurrecting a discussion about all of that would serve as well. The last formal look was the Pedestrian Infrastructure Committee that was chartered in 2015. So trying to update that and take a fresh look at it, I think is important and also help us prioritize where we should have our next round of pedestrian infrastructure investments. So I'll have some further guidance from Ed on that so that we can launch that effort and try to get some quick traction in terms of next steps. My general view on that, by the way, is that we should take a whole-town approach and look at our pedestrian infrastructure and what investments we should make where next. It shouldn't be something that is decided quickly without a lot of public input. I think it's also important that we come up with some principles about how we make these investments so they're prioritized and targeting where they'll have the greatest use and impact, but also done in a way that promotes and maximizes safety, particularly if those will be sidewalks that children use. So more to come on that. That consultant will also help us shape those principles. So that is all I had for the first Selectment's report. Jennifer, you're on the line. Anything from your end on town administration?
No, nothing.
Okay. All right. Next up, Board Liaison Reports. Monica?
So Saturday's event was a big success and the second in our series of the community engagement events. We had great turnout for the Reed Hildebrand presentation at Town Hall and for the tours on the island. And if you missed it, you can view the presentation and a video of the ecology tour on TV 79. A new survey has also been released, which you can find on greatisland.darianct.gov, and it's also on the town website. So this is in the second in our series of four surveys. And each is building on the previous one to gather new information. So please participate in all of them. It's multiple choice. It'll probably take you 10 to 20 minutes. And the survey closes on December 4th. That sounds like a long time away, but no reason to not do it sooner. So please. A big thank you to our town staff, especially Linda O'Leary, Karen Dunn, and Tony Cappinella for all of their efforts leading up to the day and on the day of the event. And I'd also like to thank the GIAC members who site and answering questions for residents, taking them around. That was a big help. And I want to give a special thank you to the volunteers from Post 53 and the New Rothen Fire Department for having an ambulance and a fire truck on standby just to keep everybody safe. After a lot of input and effort from the Board of Selectmen, the Great Island Advisory Committee and the Department of Public Works, we've been able to expand access to the island. Dogs on leash are now welcome on paved paths through March 31st. And residents are free to explore the island, but are asked to not cross any barricades or ropes. Those are all in place for your safety. And please pay attention to posted signage and respect the private residence signs. We still have tenants living on the property. The next GIAC meeting is this Wednesday, so day after tomorrow at 6 o'clock. It will be held via Zoom and will feature a presentation by an associate from James Lima Planning and Development, Programming, Funding, and Governance. So thank you. And again, I hope everybody participates in the survey.
Perfect. Okay, Sarah?
Hi, everyone. Thriving Youth Darien last met on Thursday, November 14th. On the agenda was an update on Team Talk and a survey update, as well as programming updates from the members. Their next meeting will be on Thursday, January 16th, and it will be by Zoom. One of the upcoming programs that they had promoted was an event that's going to be happening this Wednesday, the 20th, at the Darien High School at 7:00 PM. It's called Social Media and Your Kids, and it's featuring Max Stossel from Social Awakening. And the second update would be for the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee. Our next meeting is also this Wednesday, which seems to be a popular night from all these meetings now at 6:00 PM. It will be another virtual meeting and we are excited. I don't, John, I think you received an email. We've gotten to the point now where we're pretty much 25% done with this project, which is a nice milestone to have hit. And things are moving along very well. So we have our next meeting this week and I'll be able to tell you more.
I think that's terrific. One of the questions raised in that email, and it'd be great to get your view as to whether a direct update by Chris Price or others involved in the committee to maybe assist you at some future Board of Selectmen meeting with a more fulsome update, even with slides or just an update in terms of where they are on costs. Do you think that would be valuable?
I do. I think this is a large monetary project and I think it would be helpful for the residents, as well as obviously the schools, to understand kind of where we are, you know, how the finances are going. And I think it's important for the town to understand the updates on these large projects. So we have done updates in the past and, you know, happy to do that. We can make it as shorter as long as you want. They're offering to come and meet in any kind of way that makes sense for the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, Chris sent out that note today. I'll reply and make sure you're copied. And let's see if we can work that out for a Board Segment meeting.
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, that's great. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Okay, Marcy?
Nope, no updates tonight. Thank you.
Okay, terrific. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, John. The Blight Review Board, Blight Review Board, met on November 13th and we went through the eight properties currently populating our list. And we moved to add two properties to our board's consideration, the Board of Selectmen, for consideration of initiating foreclosure proceedings. It is case 16-001 and case 21-001. Both of those properties are vacant and both of those properties have been unresponsive to all of our communications since they became cases in 2021 and 2016 respectively. And what I would suggest is that we schedule an executive session with Town Council because a foreclosure proceeding is a litigation event and should probably be an executive session discussion.
Okay, that jumps a bit to new business, but good that you brought all that up. Why don't we, we'll pick that up here just a minute and maybe take a formal vote on that. But I appreciate that update, Mike. All right, I think that does it for Board Liaison Reports. Jennifer, any public comments?
No, none.
Okay. So, new business. Discuss and take action on a request to increase the Gorham's Pond Dam repair appropriation and bond authorization by $625,000, Jennifer.
Okay. We actually have Darren Ostafine here, but in your packet you do have a memo indicating that we are requesting an additional $625,000 for the Gorham's Dam project due to an error in quantity that was put out in the bid. So if you have any questions, Darren can provide a little more information on that.
I thought the information you provided, Jennifer, was really, really helpful and is the reason that I have no questions.
Yeah, it sounds like that this was a, was a clerical error in terms of the correct pricing to be included and that it was priced on a per square yard basis as opposed to square feet. And that because of that unit error, that it resulted in the monies that had to be expended being $625,000 higher. So it looks like an oversight in terms of just taking the time, that math. And I get it. The one thing that's important for everybody to know is that even though we're requesting an increase in the bond authorization by $625,000, Jennifer, is it the case that the full amount, including this additional $625,000, is what we would submit to FEMA? So in that sense, even though we're having to do an increased bond authorization to cover the cost for now, it's not affecting our FEMA reimbursement, right? So we're still going to apply for the full amount. Is that right?
Correct. These are also FEMA-eligible.
Right. Okay. So even though there was this oversight in this, it actually, net-net, should not change the economics of the project to the town because we'll just submit the additional amount to FEMA for reimbursement?
That is correct.
Darren, did you have a comment?
If I could just say, yes, we agreed and we've been told by FEMA throughout the process that we, if there was any overages and there were eligible expenses, even those would be covered. So we continue to meet with FEMA. We have another meeting with FEMA this Wednesday. And that is our understanding.
Okay. Other questions for Jennifer or Darren? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the revised? Sorry, here, let's see. So this is a resolution to amend the resolution adopted on September 23rd appropriating $3,345,900 for cost to repair the Gorham's Pond Dam and authorizing issuance of bonds and notes in the amount of $3,345,900 to meet said appropriation to increase the appropriation and bond authorization by $625,000 to $3,970,900. Could I get a motion for that?
I'll move.
Okay, Sarah moves. Monica seconds, all in favor? Okay. Jennifer, Darren, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, just to continue on Mike's discussion, discussion of the recommended Blight foreclosure. So this is two of the properties that are on your list that the board's recommending for foreclosure, correct, Mike?
That's correct.
Okay. And then when you say litigation, so what we'll do as a next step is to try to get Wayne, potentially at our next meeting for an executive session, and then the two, you'll discuss with him and we'll come to an agreement as to next steps on that or that litigation process. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then just to be clear, both these properties are currently vacant?
Yes.
Okay. All right. We've talked a little bit about this before. I think this is the right next step on these properties, particularly because they're vacant. I think the residents who live near properties like this, who are in that kind of condition, it's really unfair to them and the rules are the rules. You're not supposed to have these properties in that kind of condition. And so I think it's important for us as a board to be responsive to that. And our next step should be to get with Town Council so that we can move forward on this expedition. So does anybody have any questions for Mike about this?
Mike, you mentioned 2016 and 21. Have they, do you know how long they've been vacant?
With regard to the 20, let me just look at my notes. With regards to the 2021, you know, property, we had a neighbor come in and talk to us and the property there has been empty for a few years, even before that, before it came on the Blight list. So I would imagine the same would be true with the 2016 case.
Okay.
Okay. Jennifer, I'm not sure we need a motion just yet, but maybe we do. In any case, I think, just making sure we set up Wayne as a next step for his final recommendation on the process we need to follow and maybe a motion at that point, unless you disagree?
No, I would agree. I don't think you need anything now.
Okay. Mike, thank you to you, George, Sue, our current members of the Blight Commission. I know this is not easy, but you guys have focused on this for a long time. And I think this step to clear out these first couple of, clear foreclosure cases is important and that once we get through those, we could certainly look at these other properties that have also been very difficult. So I appreciate your effort on this very much. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And again, to those who are listening and wondering, we really do try to work hard with the people who come and talk to us and who present, you know, substantial reasons for their difficulties in maintaining their property. So if you find yourself on that list, I encourage them, those folks, to come and talk to us when we invite you.
Okay, thank you. So last item on new business, discuss and take action on a WestCOG noise abatement proposal. So you'll recall that this was something we've touched on before. And what this was, was a noise abatement feasibility study that pertains to train horn noise on the New Canaan Branch Line for Metro North that comes up from Stanford all the way to the New Canaan Train Station. By way of background, the issue there is that the trains will sound their horns at both crossings and on the approach to stations along the New Canaan Line. And it's obviously been an issue for a while just because those trains have sounded their horns. But what's brought some new urgency to it has been that the new trains that now we see on Metro North Lines in Connecticut, those trains have bright and brassy horns, whereas the older trains were maybe less robust, simply because they were old. And that really resulted in a number of residents that surround those train crossings and train stations to reach out to see if something could be done. A study was done and the question was whether we could get all of the requirements in place to create what is called a quiet zone. And a quiet zone means quiet zone and not silent zone. But what it would address is the sounding of train horns near crossings along that branch line. Currently, there are 11 such crossings. Three or four of them, I think, are private. In other words, they go to private roads or residences, the rest of them being public. And so what WestCOG did was to contract with a professional consultant that does this type of analysis to see if there were a way to put in a series of improvements along that line, mainly around those crossing, those public crossings, to see if those improvements would qualify for the creation of a quiet zone that would silence, silence the train horns at these crossings. We had a public presentation by those consultants in October and they laid out and where they would make those changes and how they would go about doing them. And it was, I think, a fairly well-attended discussion. I was there, the First Selectmen in New Canaan was there, as well as representatives from Stanford. And that's important because the crossings that we're talking about up the New Canaan Line are actually in all three towns, Stanford, New Canaan, and Darien. In the end, the estimated cost, without actually getting any bids, to make the required improvements on the New Canaan Line to achieve this quiet zone, likely totaled more than $20 million. And that's a lot of money, partly because of the improvements, but also because of the necessity for a technology that's called a constant warning time technology. And that basically means that when the crossing guard gates go down, that it's always the same amount of time between when the gates go down and when the train arrives. So it has to be sensitive to the velocity of the train in terms of when the gates are triggered to go down. And from what we're hearing, it's going to be very difficult to get that CWT waiver in place for these improvements. And that's about half the cost to put in that technology. So I have spoken with representatives of both Stanford and New Canaan and there is a strong sense in both towns that they are not in a position to fund improvements that are required for this quiet zone. And because of, because of other capital sort of priorities on their list. And so because of that, it's going to be very difficult for us to get sort of all three towns to cooperate to raise through, through some way, the $20 million that would be required to do this. Further, we've looked into alternative funding sources, such as grants from either the state or federal level, and there are none available to us that would help with funding a project like this. We've also looked at different ways to retire bonds that we might incur for such a project, such as with special taxing districts. And those are also extraordinarily difficult to set up. So my sense right now is that we are at a point where, unless we can figure out what's next with regard to funding for all, all three towns to do this, because it doesn't work unless everybody does it, this project is going to be pretty difficult to move forward. The one ray of hope that we are still working on, however, is that if the train horns with the older trains was adequate for the regulations, then maybe it's the case that the decibel or the intensity of the sound from the current train horns, in fact, exceeds the standard that's required. And so maybe there's a chance that we could get support from our federal legislators to reduce the decibel or the loudness of those train horns or reduce the duration at which those train horns are sounded. And that might actually bring some peace to residents who surround those various crossing locations. So that's the quick background on this study and where we are in terms of economics and next steps. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
John, I was looking at all of the possible recommendations and I saw somewhere the wayside horn, which is a horn that is set right at the crossing. And so it, it's a little bit more focused, but I didn't see that offered as a possibility anywhere. Did they talk about that at the meeting?
I have heard about that. The, the sound still projects from that crossing. And so what happens is that it doesn't actually reduce that, the noise level appreciably for the people who are right next to the crossing, right? So it might help for some folks that are on the perimeter, right? On the approach to the train, but it doesn't do much to solve that problem. You can get something like that, but my understanding is that it's not a, it's not a kind of the solution that I think most residents would prefer.
Well, you know what? This has been going on, this is, I think, four years for this whole thing to get from the get-go to finalizing the study. So, but I applaud your, your sticking with it and reaching out to Stanford and New Canaan. Do you feel if, a lot of times, there's cost sharing, even if we get grants? Did you get any indication from Stanford or, or New Canaan? If we did get a grant, if, if they would even be interested in the cost share portion?
Yeah, so there was some interest in that, but the grant would have to be pretty substantial. So what I'm going to work on is, is a couple of things. I am going to work on getting our federal legislators to see if they can help with just making sure that the horns we're hearing are not any louder or longer than they need to be. The other thing is I don't want to give up on grant funding. I did ask the consultants whether they had seen grant funding in other jurisdictions and they've done these types of studies all over the United States. And they've not seen that. And so it's not to say that it can't happen, but it would be great if there were some additional effort that we could put into this. In other words, I'm not quite willing to give up on this. And I will make, as part of my request to the federal legislators, is there anything that they could do to help us connect with some folks who might be sources of potential funding for something like this? The other thing I would point out is that it's not just a nuisance, but it actually does affect people's mental health. And we've done, there are lots of studies out there that show that constant exposure to noise and all of that is detrimental to people's well-being. And so there may be some grant funding that's in place to help with a study like this, simply to quiet things down for the mental health and well-being of these residents. So I'd like to look into that. It just strikes me that we haven't done everything we could to see if there might be other funding sources. So I will be spending some time on that.
Okay, and you know, I had people reach out to me and they didn't even live on these streets, right? So, you know, you, you look at the numbers and they're pretty high for the impact on those particular roads, but I think it goes even beyond that. So I do hope our representatives can help out.
Yeah, interestingly, the legislation that put all this in place was, it's not that long ago that we had crossings like this where those horns were not required or they were not nearly as loud and intrusive as they are today. I will say that, you know, on the one hand, I would love to see the noise reduced for those residents. On the other hand, I had a man who worked for me back 25 years ago and his, his family. They were in a car with the mom, the dad, this guy's only brother and his grandmother and the brother's fiance. And they were all in a car and they didn't hear the train coming. They got hit by the car and they were all wiped out. And I was, I'm still in touch with it periodically, but I just can't imagine anything more horrifying. The reality is, is that these train crossings, especially in our distracted age with electronics and all of that, are dangerous. And even at the pace those New Canaan Train Line trains are moving. And we have to take that into account somehow. And I get the reason that they put these horns in place. It's for safety in situations that I just described. But surely there's, there are things that we could explore that would help those residents having to deal with those loud train horns.
So I, I actually live in this neighborhood, right along the New Canaan Line, and I spent a lot of time talking to people in my neighborhood and up and down Hoyt Street. This certainly is an issue and a concern to them. And I understand as they've moved these new trains in, it's much larger and it's disruptive. I completely appreciate that. I did also spend a lot of time, um, knocking doors with Tracy and this was a conversation that came up along that whole line. The problem we have is we have to have buy-in from both towns, no matter what choice we make. Stanford has to be supportive of this and so does New Canaan in order to be able to fund the project. At this point, I think our best option is to really go towards our legislators and sort of do some regulation on what you said, the decimal of the, of the, of the, um, horn that's being used, the speed that's going through, uh, and start there with hopes that eventually, um, we can come to some resolve and try to find some cost sharing options and some funding. Um, but as of right now, I think our hands are tied if we don't get buy-in from those two neighboring communities. We can't do, you know, maybe it's 10% that goes through Darien of that entire line. We can't do that on our own.
And I think it's, it's clearly more, more like a third at least. And so we'd still be looking at six, seven, eight million. Even a current cost test to do something like this. So not, not a trivial investment. Mike?
Right. Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, Marcy. I, uh, live on Lake, just off of Hoyt. I'm probably one of the 2,400 or so households that would be labeled as, uh, moderate in that, you know, in that zone. Uh, but you know, i- it's, it's a terrible quality of life to, to have, you know, the, that noise and at that level. So, uh, I think we should try and keep our eyes open, see if we can't find a way to work with the other communities. Also at the same time to see if there's a, you know, regulatory response that could help alleviate some of this, uh, problem.
Okay. Anyway, I've not, uh, given up on this. I brought it back up to Westcog for a few discussions. And our executive director there is aware of this and I'm going to spend some more time. I will put this back on the agenda for sometime January, February and give you guys an update on these efforts. But I haven't given up. I will continue to work on this and let's see what happens.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, no old business today. Uh, we have an appointment to consider. So this will be to appoint a member to the Environmental Protection Commission for a term expiring June 30th of 2027. Can I get a motion to appoint, uh, Trevor Turpinning to the Environmental Protection Commission? Okay, Marcy moves. Uh, Monica seconds. All in favor? Okay, three in favor, all opposed? Mike two. Okay, three to two. All right, thank you. Um, next up, we just have minutes to approve. So these are minutes for the regular meeting of November 4th as well as the special meeting that we had for November 6th, two days after that. And that was to do, um, uh, personnel interviews. So I've read through both sets of minutes. And, uh, except for the Board of Selectmen regular meeting, this is item number three where it says the motion, I think there's a letter E there. It needs to be replaced with a closed parentheses. But other than that, I didn't see any other edits on either these minutes or the special meeting minutes. Does anyone else have any minutes, uh, comments for the minutes? Okay, could I, could I get a motion to approve both the November 4th and the November 6th minutes, uh, amended? Okay, Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Okay. So we've got minutes done. Uh, agenda review. So flood update, Ed has been out of pocket. Um, but as soon as he gets back, we will finalize this video update that I am planning, but I want to make sure that you all have enough information to, uh, feel fully updated on those topics. But we do have a meeting that's coming up that's, uh, a, providing a public hearing update on the, uh, Salt Box Flood Project. And this is set for Thursday evening, this Thursday, the 21st. Um, we've got a few discussions kind of behind the scenes going on, all that. But I, my sense is having the public hearing is still valuable simply because there's lots of residents that would like an update on that project. And so my, my sense is that that should go ahead and proceed. But if you'd like an update on that particular project, that's going to be a good one to go to. It'll be taped in any case that you can review it. Uh, the other project, we will, I'm not sure when the update is scheduled for that, but it's coming. In any case, we're, we're, we're teed up to get a, a complete update to you and really the public on not just those two projects, but overall our flooding situation generally. Um, the second item on there is the beautification commission garden improvement update. I met with the commission last week about that. And I think they've got some pretty good proposals, not just for uh, clearing up and cleaning up a few of the gardens that they focus on, but also a budget for maintaining them going forward. I'd like to sit down and talk to Ed one more time about, uh, their proposal. One thing they are going to do is marry that proposal with some fundraising that they intend to embark on. And I told them I would help them with that. But a super positive meeting, and I think it's important for those spaces to look sharp, particularly because we're finishing up all this development. And even, even a small spot that, uh, uh, looks professional and maintained, I think adds to the image of the town and uh, for not that much money. So I applaud everybody on the beautification commission for taking that initiative. And once I've talked to Ed, we'll, we'll have a more complete update on that for everybody. Uh, and then Sarah had mentioned coming up with an off-cycle capital request process. I know that you guys have made a lot of progress on that, including Jack Davis. And we'll talk about that at some point, unless you wanted to, had a couple of words on that now, Sarah?
Uh, no, I did send a copy, but, um, I will, uh, give the disclaimer that it is a draft. And my understanding was that Jen had looked at the draft, but she had not. So I apologize, Jen. And that we will, um, possibly have another round of edits, but I did want you to see kind of where we are and that we are, um, hopefully going to have that free, hopefully at the next meeting. We'll see.
Uh, no, we'll leave that for agenda review. And I didn't want to get to full update on that, but I have read it and I really like it. I think it's a great initiative and will help, um, reduce surprise with regard to capital projects. So I applaud you for that, Sarah. I think it looks terrific. We will discuss it when you're ready.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, anything else for the good of the order? Okay. Our next meetings are December 2nd, uh, coming up. That will be in person. And then December 16th will be virtual. We also have the state of the town addresses coming up. I think those are on the 9th. Is that the Monday? If somebody's got their calendar in front of them. So those addresses will be coming up. And I'd encourage everybody to watch that. Uh, other than that, I think we are done for this evening. Could I get a motion to adjourn? Okay, Sarah moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? And we stand adjourned at 8:34. Thank you, friends.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Same to everybody. Take care.